Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the first meeting of 2022. I will now call the public hearing of January 18th, 2022 to order. This meeting is being convened by electronic means, and as such, council members may participate in person or by electronic means. For council members participating by electronic means, please ensure your video is turned on and let the clerk know if you have to leave the meeting for the purposes of confirming quorum. Council members are reminded that in accordance with Section 14.13, members must enable their video to confirm quorum. If council members attending by electronic means lose connection during any portion of the hearing, we will recess the meeting until the connection is restored. If council members lose connection during the voting process, staff will get you back online quickly while we suspend the voting process. The contact information has been circulated to you. Members of the public can view the proceedings via the live stream and YouTube link, which will be tweeted out by @VancityClerk. We acknowledge that we are on the traditional and unceded territory of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Waututh people. We thank them for having cared for this land and look forward to working with them in partnership as we continue to build this great city together. I also want to take a moment to recognize the immense contributions of the City of Vancouver's staff, who work hard every day to help make our city an incredible place to live, work, and play. Tragically, on January 7th, we lost one of our staff in a workplace accident at the National Yard. We are all deeply saddened by the loss of Gord Dalianek, who had been with the city's street team in engineering for 32 years. Mayor Stewart will deliver formal condolences at the council meeting on January 25th. However, tonight, at our first meeting back in 2022, I would like to send our sincere condolences to Gord's family, his colleagues, and his friends. Clerk, may I have the roll call, please?
Deputy Mayor Frye in the chair. Mayor Stewart is absent. Councillor Carr. Councillor DeGenova.
Present.
Councillor Swanson.
Here.
Councillor Hardwick.
Present.
Councillor Weeb.
Present.
Councillor Boyle.
Present.
Councillor Dominado.
Present.
Councillor Bly.
Present.
Councillor Kirby Young. You have quorum, Deputy Mayor Frye.
Thank you. Before we begin, I have some announcements. As part of ongoing COVID-19 health and safety precautions, staff who are presenting or responding to questions will be in attendance virtually. Hybrid options continue to be available for council and the public with restrictions. Speakers will have, oh, sorry, the public may participate by speaking over the phone, submitting written comments to council, or speaking in person. The maximum allowable capacity for public in-person participation permitted in the council chamber is 15. Virtual participation is highly encouraged. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or opposed to the recommendations, and if they are a resident of Vancouver. Speakers may only speak once and should follow along on Twitter @VancityClerk for updates on the progress of the meeting so they don't miss their turn to speak. Any comments on agenda items can be submitted in writing through our online web form at vancouver.ca-public-hearing-comments. This link will also be tweeted. Those speaking on behalf of other persons or groups will have eight minutes to speak only if those represented are also present on the phone or in person and must not be speakers themselves. Those represented should also confirm that they are on the line. Speakers who pre-registered with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight delay. To navigate through the slides of your presentation, please say "next" so that the clerk may advance your slides. Speakers that were speaking in person in the council chamber, please wait for the clerk to prompt you before coming forward to the podium so that the podium can be sanitized between speakers. I also want to note that the City of Vancouver's longstanding commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion, including utmost respect for all genders, I remind council that when addressing speakers and staff, we will avoid using gendered honorifics and will instead refer to the person by first and last name, role, or title. A reminder that council's role at public hearing is to be a quasi-judicial body, which means that council is only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant, or technical advice from staff, but should save debate or after the close of the speaker's list. After speaking from, after hearing from speakers, council may, one, approve the application in principle, two, refuse the application, or three, refer the application to staff for further consideration. Finally, if council does not conclude hearing from all the speakers this evening, we will recess and reconvene the meeting on Thursday, January 20th, 2022, at 6:00 PM. All right, so our first item of business, CD1 rezoning, 1369 to 1381 Kingsway. Does any member of council wish to declare a conflict of interest on this item? Seeing none, the clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by Yamamoto Architecture Incorporated to rezone 1369-1381 Kingsway C-2 Commercial District to CD-1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a six-story mixed-use building with 49 secured market rental residential units and commercial space at grade. A height of 24.1 meters, equivalent of 79 feet, and a floor-space ratio FSR of 3.80 are proposed. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability recommends approval. Subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing. Three pieces of correspondence in support and two pieces of correspondence in opposition. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Thank you, Clerk. Any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-853-8610, followed by participant code 1061445, pound, for the close of the speaker's list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. There will be an opportunity for those on the phone or in person to speak at the end of the registered speakers list. We have Carly Rosenblatt, rezoning planner, rezoning center planning, urban design, and sustainability, on the line to present the application.
Good evening, Mayor Council. My name is Carly Rosenblatt. I'm the rezoning planner for this application, which proposes to rezone 1369-1381 Kingsway under the Secured Rental Policy. The subject site, shown in red, is located one lot in the northwest corner of Kingsway and Knight Street in the Kensington Cedar Cottage neighborhood. The site and surrounding area to the east, south, and west are Zone C2, and generally developed with one to three-story mixed-use buildings. Southwest of the site, there is 17-story mixed-use buildings, Zone CD1. The site is approximately 1,116 square meters in size, with a street frontage of approximately 31.2 meters along Kingsway. There are no residential tenants on the site. Here is a map of local amenities. The site is located within 800 meters of several parks, childcare facilities, and cultural and community spaces. The site is well-staffed by public transit, with a bus stop directly in front of the site, and located within two blocks of the dump trees bike way. I also want to clarify that Lawrence-Telkirk Elementary School is located to the east of the site. There was a small error in the contact description on the applicant board. The Housing Vancouver Strategy sets the target of 20,000 new market rental housing units across the city to help address Vancouver's historically low rental vacancy rate. This rezoning application is being considered under the Secured Rental Policy, previously known as Rental 100. The owner submitted a rezoning inquiry prior to the consolidation of the new Secured Rental Policy and can continue to be assessed under this policy, which intends to secure rental housing units. For sites in the C2 zone, the policy provides general direction for consideration of additional height and density up to six stories. The formal rezoning application was submitted on November 30th, 2020. It proposes to rezone the site from C2 to CD1 to permit the development of a six-story mixed-use building containing 49 secured market rental units. Eighteen of the units are designed as family units, containing two and three bedrooms. The density is 3.8 FSR, and the building height is 24.1 meters. As part of the Restart Marketing Vancouver initiative in response to COVID-19, this project will contribute to approximately 172 new onsite and offsite construction jobs during the initiative's recovery phase. The applicant is eligible to seek the DCL waiver for this application and will make the decision at the development permit stage. This slide shows the average market rents for newer buildings on the east side in the blue column, the DCL bylaw maximum average rent for the east side in 2021 in the green column, and then relative affordability of renting when compared to the cost of homeownership done in the red column. It also shows the proposed average unit sizes, which range from 437 square feet per studio to 980 square feet per three-bedroom unit. With respect to proposed rental units, these will be secured through a housing agreement prohibiting the stratification of units. Following submission of the rezoning application, a virtual open house was held from March 15th to April 4th, 2021. Approximately 1,372 notification postcards were mailed to local area residents, starting with the virtual open house. In total, we received approximately 21 pieces of feedback. Key themes of support include the height, density, massing, building design, and addition of increased housing stock and retail space. We heard some comments of concern that the site was being underutilized, given its closed doors can be seen major interceptions, desire for increased amenity space, and improved building design. We also heard concerns that development will not provide adequately affordable housing and should include social housing rates. Staff assess that the proposal concludes the height and density are appropriate and consistent with what is permitted under the Secured Rental Policy. Design conditions are included in Appendix B to provide for an expanded amenity area. On affordable housing, the Secured Rental Policy intends to increase the supply of secured rental units. The SRP does not require below-market rental rates such as those found in social housing In summary, staff recommend approval of this application to rezone 1369-1381 Kingsway from C2 to CD1, subject to the conditions outlined in Appendix B of the report, as meets the intent of the Secured Rental Policy. If approved, the application would contribute 49 new secured rental units. Thanks very much. Both staff and applicant team are available for the application.
Thank you, Carly. Is the applicant team here to speak to the application?
Hi, this is Taizo Yamamoto with Yamamoto Architecture. We are here, but we are happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions from council to staff or the applicant team? Please note that this is the only opportunity of council to ask questions of the applicant. And I see Councillor Kirby Young on the queue. Councillor Kirby Young, for five.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and thanks, staff, for the overview. I have a question with respect to commentary on Page Five of the application, which speaks to the timing of this application coming in and the consolidation of the rental policies, and speaks to the energy performance of the building. And I know that, I wonder if staff can comment if the energy performance of this building is, is different prior to the additional green building standards being implemented? I believe it's classified as the applicant has selected to meet the low emissions option, and I'm just wondering what we might see that would be different if council were receiving this application today versus what was permitted at the time the application was made?
Thank you for your question. This is Carly Rosenblatt. So the rezoning will need the green building requirements to provide low emissions?
Yes, I recognize it says low emissions. It just seemed to be some reference in the report in the environmental section that there had been additional green building standards implemented, and I'm wondering what the applicant does not need to do for this application that they would, for example, if it was being brought forward today? I'm just trying to understand the difference in the, if any, in the green building policy.
Hi, thank you for, thank you for your questions. So we will comply under the original Rental 100's green building requirements, as opposed to any new policies introduced, new Secured Rental Policy amendments.
Would it be helpful if staff wanted, wants to come back with more detail if that information's, and if it's not readily available, that's fine, you can just say so and let me know? I'm just conscious of time.
Staff will follow up with more detail.
Okay, I'm going to leave it there for Chair, I might come back on, thank you.
Great, thank you. And Councillor Swanson?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for the applicant. Is this going to be a pet-friendly building?
I can answer that. Most likely, yes, Councillor Swanson.
Okay, that would be good. What are you doing about the traffic pollution? That's quite a lot of traffic there, and there's all kinds of studies that show that pollution from traffic is bad for people's health.
As part of the green buildings policy, there's the option to use a green energy system. We will most likely be doing that in this building, so that will be providing heating and cooling without needing to open windows, so that will mitigate the amount of pollution entering people's units. From an acoustical perspective, we'll be complying with the city's requirements that have a higher standard for windows and envelope facing arterial, arterial streets.
And the last question is, are you planning on getting any senior government chief financing to build this?
We would always seek that out, because this is a market rental project. I'm not sure what the programs will be. Those are changing on a yearly basis. There is a new program that CMHC came out with recently that does have some promise, and so we will be exploring that.
Are there any affordability requirements in that, in the programs that you might apply for?
Yes, all of the CMHC program, well, not all of them, the ones that are cheaper financing all have affordability requirements of varying degrees.
What are they?
Off the top of my head, the newest one, that is not the RCFI, it's a replacement for the FLEX program, I haven't looked into it enough, other than at just a cursory level, so I couldn't really comment on that right now, Councillor Swanson.
So you don't know if they would require rents lower than, for example, the DCL waiver maximum?
Off the top of my head, I, I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Swanson. Councillor Hardwick, for five.
Thank you very much. I'm looking at the, the site diagrams, and I'm noting from the laneway side that this appears to be seven stories in height. Could you comment, please? It's stated as six stories, but it appears seven stories on the laneway side. Could you explain that, please?
All right, thank you for your question. But the seven-story appearance is related to the grading of the site. So the firefighter response point would be from Kingsway, and from Kingsway, the building would be six stories. But along the lane, because of the drop-off of the site, we are proposing to incorporate another level of rental units within that. So that's why the appearance from the lane is seven stories. In terms of, sorry.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. In terms of height, in the C2 base zonings are, and the new SRP policies are, are defined based on the frontage of the site, in this case, which would be Kingsway. So from the height compliance, we are in line with, with those policies, but the, the result is just, again, the nature of the sloping of the site.
How many units does that affect in, on the seven-story side?
Let me just, at the moment, what we are proposing is to use a two-story townhouse within that area, and there are three units that overlap onto that seventh floor, so it would affect three family units.
Oh, thank you very much. And, and just to confirm, this is the only opportunity that we have to speak to the applicant to, to Chair Frye. Are there other opportunities to, this is it?
Yep.
So also to staff, then, may I address a question to staff?
May.
Is there popular, neighborhood population tracking in this area? I'm looking at the other items that we have up tonight. For example, in the number, the third one, number three, that we have up tonight, there's population tracking in that neighborhood. Has that been taken into consideration at this location?
That's a question for staff?
Thank you, Councillor Hardwick. Could you please clarify what you're asking?
Yeah, in, in, in number three of the things that we're looking at tonight, there's an appendix, a population tracking appendix, and so my question is, is there a neighborhood population tracking appendix for this item as well in this neighborhood, which is, I think, one lot in from Knight?
Thank you, Councillor Hardwick, for your question. No, I'm not aware of any population tracking for this particular neighborhood.
Okay, thank you very much for answering my questions, that's it.
Great, thank you, Councillor Hardwick. Councillor Kirby Young, back on the queue.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I have a couple of questions, I'll direct straight to the applicant as well. The first one is with respect to the amenity space, and I'm looking at the page seven of the report, where staff reference that they recommend improving it, including increasing the size to make it more functional, from 485 to 736 square feet, as well as potentially relocating it from the second floor north to potentially a southeast facing, and that's apparently noted as a potential design condition, Appendix B. My question to the applicant is, how likely are you to do that?
Thank you for your question. Very likely. This is part of the conditions of our rezoning, and, and the intent is that we will be locating that outdoor amenity and indoor, both on the top level.
Okay, and, and, because it was also suggested it's quite significant change to make it put in a different location in the building as well, so that you would be looking at that change as well?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thanks for clarifying, because the language here said, language is important, it says "may," it may change to accommodate design conditions, so thanks for that. My next question is, it'll often, it notes in the report, as it often does with these, that the applicant may, at its discretion, choose to take a DCL waiver pursuant to Section 3.1A, I think, of the DCL bylaw. And I noticed that in order to qualify for that, you, an applicant would have to offer 20% of the fourth base at below-market rental. Again, I'm curious if you have perspective on the likelihood of being able to do that. And the second part of the question is, as we're hearing a lot of feedback on the really small spaces and livability of those, is that those sizes are prescribed in the DCL bylaw, and does that influence the size of the units that you bring forward when you're designing a proposal like this? So two-part question.
I can speak to that. In terms of going for the DCL waiver, as it stands currently, we are not going to be pursuing the DCL waiver, though, as Councillor Swanson mentioned, with the changing programs and the financing options, that may be something we might explore to figure out what would be the best option for the project moving forward, but currently, no. As it relates to the second question, in terms of the DCL waiver sizes, and whether that would influence our decision on the sizes of units, certainly, when we are looking at the DCL waiver and complying with that, it would be influencing our decision to size units different ways. That being said, in my experience, is that, with the exception of looking at much smaller studio units, that are kind of micro-units, I personally, in my experience, haven't seen it be a huge impediment.
Okay, thanks, I'm out of time, but thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Kirby Young. And to Councillor Hardwick, I'm afraid I did misspeak earlier. In fact, this was our only chance to ask questions of the applicant. You will have an opportunity to ask further questions of staff after we hear from the speakers. Oh, and with that, I see Councillor Weeb on the queue. Councillor Weeb?
Just a quick question to the applicant. The accessible parking spaces, are they tied to a specific accessible unit, or are they open to the full building?
Generally, the accessible parking spaces are not necessarily tied to a unit.
Okay, so those will be left? We've just, I've heard of a few places that they get pulled into a unit, and then someone accessible moves into the building and struggles to find an accessible spot. So these will be left to the building as accessible units for visitors or owners in the building that have accessibility issues, or how is that going to be determined?
I think that would be kind of an ongoing property management issue, Councillor Weeb. I would imagine we would assign it, and in the case where there's any kind of residence, if this is purely the residential portion, if there's any residence that has accessibility issues, then we would reassign it or find a way to accommodate.
Okay, I guess a quick follow-up question to staff. This is something we're seeing a lot in buildings. How are we ensuring that the accessibility demands that will change in a rental building are being met when units are tied to the units?
Councillor, this is Bruce Gaskovich in Engineering, Signature Engineering Engineer. Currently, accessible, the city doesn't regulate how properties distribute any of their parking spaces, whether it's accessible parking, or visitor parking, or, or I guess any of the spaces related to a site, so we don't have authority over whether it is assigned to a specific So we don't have authority over whether it is assigned to a specific unit or owner or not. That said, there is work that's happening on the side in terms of accessibility requirements that will be forthcoming later.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Thanks, Councilor Weeb. All right. Seeing no further questions from council, we're going to now hear from the public, starting with speaker number one, Jack and Daddy Off. We have Jack and Daddy Off online. Speaker number one, Jack and Daddy Off.
Hello, Jack, please go ahead.
Hey, can you hear me?
We sure can, thank you.
Hey, my name's Jack and Daddy Off. I'm from Vancouver, and I big-time oppose this rezoning. I big-time oppose the heck out of it because this friggin' thing gets rezoned, there's going to be construction there for a while, and I just can't have that, you know? I've been training martial arts right beside the building in question for six years. I'm extremely disciplined, and I only use my fists for defense. I can defend myself against anyone at this point. It would not even be fair for me to use them on offense. They are deadly weapons. I can't have this rezoning go ahead. There'll be traffic and noise that will totally disrupt my vibe. I have a bear inside me, and I need the discipline of martial arts to keep him at bay. I got to keep the bear trained, otherwise he's going to go searching for honey, he's going to go searching, and he's going to find it. I'm not saying I don't have control of myself. That would be insane. I'm saying that my dojo should not be disrupted by some gosh dang ding dong who wants to make a quick buck. That ain't cool where I'm from. That ain't cool at all. I know council is going to have their boat, and they're going to do their deciding, and they're going to make their choice, but I refuse to take all this line down. My sensey wang would not approve. He's taught me everything I know, and I know a bunch of stuff. My sensey wang has been with me through all the trials and tribulations I've gone through over the last six years. He's been with me through two divorces, my anger management course, bankruptcy, and of course, COVID. That kind of loyalty deserves loyalty in return. She didn't give up on me when my roundhouse kicks were laughable. She didn't shun me because I'm too little, man, half my size. He kept teaching me, which is a virtue that seems lost in society today. And I'm no angel. I've cheated on every girl I've ever dated. I've cheated on my taxes. I've wrongly accused my friends and stuff, then fallen off the handle and had to spend the night in lockup. But martial arts is something I've never cheated on.
Hey, Jack.
I kept showing up, even though those kids, they would laugh at me, and I didn't stay home because of three of me, a ten-year-old kid had three belts handed me. I'm a bull belt now, and that little baby quit. He'd probably be in favor of the rezoning. Or maybe change his mind halfway through.
Hey, Jack, Jack, I'm just going to, it's the chair. I'm just going to interrupt you for a second. Can we just focus onto the actual merits or issues with the development itself? Just to get it to focus a little bit. Thanks.
Yeah. It's just, there's so much traffic that goes through there, and it's already such a noisy place. And then you start putting a building in there, and then, gosh, it's just going to go all deck. And I don't even know what I would do if that was to happen.
Okay, thanks, Jack.
Point of privilege, Chair?
Sure.
Councilor DeGenova, I'm waiting for IT to contact me, but I can't log on to my remote desktop. But I was hoping you'd add me to the list, and I may have to do this until I have access to my remote desktop.
Jack, if you want to just stay on the line, I think Councilor DeGenova has some question for you. Councilor DeGenova?
Hi. Hi, Jack. I'm just wondering if you could share with me how you came to learn of this rezoning?
I saw the sign and the poster.
Okay. And do you mind me asking just like how many blocks away you live or how close you live specifically to this?
Well, I take the bus there. I live like, kind of like fifteen-minute bus ride away.
Okay. And is it, is it correct to say your biggest concern is sort of the, as you described it? Let me know if this is inaccurate, the chaos from construction?
Mm-hmm. I would say that that's accurate.
Do you, do you feel that there might be a benefit in creating homes in the long term? That idea of a little bit of pain for a long-term gain?
I mean, when you put it like that, kinda...
Thank you.
I just...
That's all, that's, oh, sorry, go ahead, please.
I just don't want it to get all busy and stuff.
But you like living in a neighborhood? Would you, you know, if you couldn't live there, would you like there to be housing for you? Is that... Do you, do you think others should have that same opportunity?
Yeah, I guess I kind of do, yeah.
Thanks so much. That's all my questions, Chair.
Great, thank you, Councilor DeGenova, and thanks, Jack. There's no further questions for you. All right. And next on the speakers list, speaker number two, Nathan Davidovich. We have Nathan Davidovich on the line.
Thank you, councilors. Do you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, Nathan.
No problem.
We can hear you just fine, thanks, Nathan.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much, councilors. The, there is some problems with the numbers on Kingsway. The, some of the boards show the number thirteen seventy-five to thirteen seventy-nine, and the present application is different numbers of thirteen sixty-nine to thirteen eighty-one, Kingsway. So I don't know if that's an oversight or what. The, the boards, the drawings show... Why is it being, why am I being held? Do you hear me? Hello?
Yeah, no, we can still hear you, Nathan.
There is some kind of a background noise or something.
You're coming through loud and clear. We can, we don't hear it, so...
Okay, okay. Well, the, the drawings show two benches beside the bus stop. We need a bus shelter. That's a transfer point between Kingsway and Knight buses. And the other possibility is to have a proper canopy, like at Broadway and Commercial for the ninety-nine bus, and that's require an encroachment agreement. The diagram also shows a tree in front of the benches, which will distract the loading and unloading of passengers from the bus because the bus stop is right there. Page ten of the referral report, it says that, I'm just going to quote what it says, "The site is well-served by public transit with bus stop in front, and frequent bus service available on Kingsway, including the N-19 routes that run between Metron Town Station and Stanley Park." Well, you know, this is not accurate. You know, it's, what is well-served by transit and what is frequent bus service available? I presume the staff never heard of the cutbacks, the thirty-seven bus routes on January the third of this year, plus other cutbacks? The N-19 bus route runs between downtown and Metrotown and US Minister and Surrey. It doesn't go to Stanley Park. That's the number nineteen bus. But the, the whole problem on Kingsway is that for, there is twenty-four-seven bus service heading east, but heading west, there's only about twenty-one or twenty-two hours service. And this has been a constant complaint with TransLink because other bus routes, like on Hastings Street, they have twenty-four-seven bus service in both directions. The, the other thing is, there is no protected bike lane close by. It's just regular bike lanes, but we need way more protected bike lanes if we want to provide all this parking space for bikes and, and so they be safe. On Kingsway, there is only painted left-turn bays, while on Knight Street, there are concrete left-turn bays. And that's what's needed on Kingsway for safety reasons. And I think I sent you an email about Vision Zero and how important it is to consider Vision Zero in any development, any zoning, anything that, that's done in the city. And, and that's not, of course, considered here.
Nathan, just coming up on thirty seconds left for final thoughts here.
Oh, oh, okay. Well, as I said, there is lots of, of problems with traffic in the area. Knight Street has a thousand trucks a day, and Knight and Kingsway is very, very busy. And, you know, the applicant has no traffic plan that is submitted. So it's really hard to evaluate everything. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks so much, Nathan. No questions from council, but appreciate taking the time to speak to us. Next, speaker number three, Chuck Kittenraw. Chuck Kittenraw, speaker number three.
Speaker three is not on the line.
Okay, thanks, Leslie. Speaker number four, Celine McRae Hamdi. Speaker number four, Celine McRae Hamdi on the line.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
We sure can. And please let us know if you're a resident of Vancouver.
Thank you. Yes, I, I am a resident of Vancouver. And for the record, I've stayed in Vancouver for the entire pandemic. I'm calling to support the application for the rezoning. And I think frankly that I'm really tired of having to beg for more housing in the city. We're talking about a development on two arterials that would displace no residential housing units at all that requires no public funds to construct and that meets all of the requirements that the city lays out, the zoning that encourages for arterial roads. And, and above all of that, if you look for this, there are no studios available in this area that are cheaper. Or, sorry, let me, there are no studios that are secured. There are maybe two or three one-bedroom apartments. And I haven't been able to find a single two- or three-bedroom apartment in the neighborhood that is accessible or affordable. So all I am saying today is, for something that is already within the six-story zoning encouraged for arterials, I don't see why it can't just be pre-zoned, and we don't have to come in begging for more housing in a housing crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Celine. We have no questions from council for you, but thank you for taking the time to come speak to us. Next speaker number five, Alexander Hayden Stein. Alexander Hayden Stein, speaker number five.
Yo, no, it's me. Can you, can you, can you hear me?
We sure can. And please let us know if you're a resident of Vancouver.
Okay, guys. It, yes, and it's primetime ninety-nine, Alex Stein. And while I'm here, the rezoning effort is, we got to fix the area because, listen, I'm the vaccine rap king. Primetime ninety-nine, vaccinate your body, vaccinate your mind, vaccinate the left, vaccinate the right, vaccinate the black, vaccinate the white. I want to vaccinate you in my thong. I want to vaccinate your dad and mom. I want to vaccinate the whole darn world. I want to vaccinate every boy and girl. I want to stick the needle deep in their arms.
Alexander.
Stick the needle in my arm. I just want her to know that I'm vaccinated from the lone dog.
Oh, thank you, that was good. Didn't realize that was an option. Sure, we'll, we'll just wrap this up.
Primetime ninety-nine, because I'm on the grind, because I'm Alex Stein, and I grind...
All right, I guess we're going to have to... Alexander, we're going to give you just one option to actually speak to the, to the item at hand, but we do have a pretty busy agenda, and we don't have a lot of time for karaoke. So if you have some comments on this application, please give them now. Otherwise, we're going to reset and move on to the next speaker.
Vaccination station, Fauci, ouchie.
All right, I think we're done. Thank you for indulging that. Folks, speaker number six, Alvin Locke. We have speaker number six, Alvin Locke, on the line.
Hi, can you hear me?
You sure can, thanks, Alvin. And please let us know if you're a resident of Vancouver.
Yeah, absolutely. So first, I'd like to give the city council for the opportunity to speak today. I must say, this is my first city council meeting, and if this is how things usually go, I might start to become a regular here. So, yeah, my name is Alvin. I am a resident of Vancouver, and I would like to state my support for the recommended rezoning at thirteen sixty-eight to thirteen eighty-one Kingsway. Just to share my thoughts, so I'm currently in my final year of an engineering degree at UBC, but like many people in my generation, the goal of one day owning a home is becoming less and less likely by the year. I understand that those proposed applications have concerns about specific size and type and configuration of future units, but the one fact that is inexplicable is that Vancouver has a shortage of housing. You have surplus demand and supply. Let's not make the perfect, let's, let's not make perfect the enemy of good. Let's not support young people out of the neighborhoods they grew up in. If the proposed property meets all of the bylaws and regulations applied by the city, the calculation is simple. We don't have enough homes, so the solution is to build more. These are the reasons for my support. And once again, I'd like to thank the council for allowing me to speak today. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Very succinct, and no questions from council. All right. So now we are, we're through the speakers list. If there are any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the speakers list. And I'm seeing a signal from the clerks. If we... So we'll call for any additional speakers, calling once... Calling twice. Oh, okay. So one more time, if there are any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Any speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium when prompted by the clerk. Seeing no more. This is the final readout of this number for any additional speakers. If there are any additional speakers who wish to speak to this, to speak to council on this item, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound. And at this point, I think we take, do we take a five-minute break to wait for anybody who would like to speak to it? Well, now, back in five minutes. All right, folks, and we're back. Seeing as there are no additional speakers, the speakers list is now closed. So on that, does the applicant have any closing comments?
Nothing further from me.
Great, thank you. And does staff have any closing comments?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, council, for the questions this evening. With regards to the earlier question around green building policies, I want to clarify the new regulations focus on zero emissions building heat and hot water systems. Jeff Smith and the sustainability staff will be reporting back to council in the future to explain the new zero emission building regulations that are forthcoming, when they become effective, and if they'll apply to industry applications. And I believe a presentation is expected in early spring. And in the meantime, staff will try to gather a memo that explains the differences between the green building policies. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Now, do council have any questions for staff? Note that there's no additional questions to the applicant at this point, so these are just questions of staff. See councillor Swanson on the queue. Councillor Swanson, questions of staff?
Yep. Thanks. Could staff clarify what is required to get a DCL waiver? Does it require just meeting the requirements for a certain level of rent or does it require 20% at below-market rent, like councillor Kirby Young was asking?
Hi, good evening, council. This is Sam Hock, I'm the housing planner for this file. To clarify that, that's correct, yeah, so it's not 20% units, it's, they just have to meet the, they have to meet the unit average for each unit type. There's no below-market requirement.
No 20%?
Yes, that's correct. And they have to meet the unit size requirement as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it for questions, councillor Swanson?
Yep.
Great. All right, seeing no further questions, council can now make a decision on this application. Do we have a mover or a recommendation?
Councillor Boyle.
I saw councillor, I saw councillor Kirby Young, and I'm gonna give the second to councillor Boyle. So moved by councillor Kirby Young and seconded by councillor Boyle. Is there any debate? Councillor Swanson, is that new on the queue or?
Yeah. Point of privilege?
Yep.
Councillor DeGenova? I'd like to be put on the queue. I'm happy to move the motion. Sorry, I have IT difficulties right now. I'll turn my camera on. I have IT on the line.
Okay, so we're councillor Swanson, councillor Hardwick, and councillor DeGenova. Councillor Swanson?
Yeah, so I'm gonna have a hard time voting for this. There's no CAC payment, there could easily be a DCL waiver, there's extra density, there may be federal financing, and there's, and it will, there's no, basically no affordability for the median renter household, which is about 50,000. A median, a single person below 50,000 couldn't even afford a studio unit here. I think it's also going to be gentrifying the businesses in the area. And I think that if we're gonna be giving CAC waivers, extra density, and maybe DCL waivers, that we need to be requiring at least a minimal level of affordability, which I don't see happening here. That's it for me.
Thanks, councillor Swanson. Councillor Hardwick?
Thanks very much. I asked the question about whether there was neighborhood population tracking for a reason. And that is that I have continued to ask since a motion was passed in May of 2020 for more complete information and data on the housing profile of the city. And this is another example of where that has not been provided. Now, despite asking repeatedly and feeling like I'm nagging on the subject, but it would be easy to solve if we could actually be provided with the necessary data, but we were told by the director of planning back in August that the housing, the zone capacity data, for example, doesn't exist. So, or does not exist in machine-readable form. So we are at a disadvantage, again, in understanding how we're, the impact of our votes. And that has been my explanation for some time around abstaining, understanding that abstaining under the Vancouver Charter is different than in Robert's Rules. In this case, it would mean a vote in favor, but acknowledging the fact that I have insufficient information to make a decision based on the data deficit that persists. Now, there is good news. I know that the long, the census data will be available on February 9th, coming right up, and we'll have a clearer picture at that time of how population growth has been affecting our city and have a sense of the congruity between our policies and our decisions on this area. So I just wanted to draw attention to the fact that each decision that we make without a full picture of the data is just conjecture. And whereas there may be merits to individual projects unless we're able to evaluate them fully, council is in a, again, at a deficit for decision-making. I'll leave it there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Hardwick. Councillor DeGenova, you're next.
Thanks. Sorry, my IT issues still aren't fixed, but I will try and get through this one. I wanted to speak in support of this, of the staff recommendations. And I really wanted to thank the speakers who called in, and I appreciated. I found it really refreshing how my questions were answered by the first speaker, who said that when he thinks about if other people should be afforded the opportunity to live in his neighborhood, and if this would provide them with those opportunities, that he actually did agree that that's something that he would like to see happen. I mean, that doesn't mean he doesn't still have his other issues. I'm not trying to say that he changed his mind, but I do think that we need to, you know, consider some of the impacts and look at appropriate density and to, you know, councillor Hardwick's comments before. I don't think that that's the same in every single neighborhood, but at the same time, I do think that we do need to push forward for more affordability in our city, considering we keep creeping up to awards earning, the award for number one, least affordable city in the world. We're not quite there yet, but we're pretty close to the top of the list. And I'm hoping that the more affordable housing that we move forward here, the more opportunities that we will give to people and especially families living in the city of Vancouver. Thanks. Chair, you may be on mute.
Am I on mute? Oh. Oh, okay, yeah. Seeing no further speakers, we're gonna move to a vote in queue, folks, so.
And I'll need a vote assist, chair. My apologies, my remote's not working. In favor, please.
Chair, this is councillor Boyle. I also need a vote assist in favor.
And just waiting on councillor, okay. And so that passes with Mayor Stewart absent, councillor Swanson and councillor Hardwick in opposition. Great, thanks, folks. Move back to the main queue here. And item number two, CD1 rezoning for 3304 Kingsway. Does any member of council wish to declare a conflict of interest on item number two? Seeing none, the clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by Yamamoto Architecture Incorporated to rezone 3304 Kingsway from C-2 Commercial District to C-D-1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a six-story mixed-use building with commercial at-grade and 79 secured market rental residential units. A height of 24 meters, equivalent of 78.7 feet, and a floor space ratio FSR of 3.93 are proposed. The general manager of planning urban design and sustainability recommends approval, subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing. Fifty-six pieces of correspondence in support, nine pieces of correspondence in opposition, and two pieces of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Thank you, clerk. Any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610 followed by participant code 1061445-pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. There will also be an opportunity for those on the phone or in person to speak at the end of the registered speakers list. We have Carly Rosenblatt, rezoning planner, rezoning center, planning urban design and sustainability on the line to present the application. Over to you, Carly.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Carly Rosenblatt here as the rezoning planner to this application, which proposes to rezone 3304 Kingsway under the secured rental policy. For our continuous presentation, I would like to make a quick note that there was a discrepancy in figure six of the referral report with respect to average unit sizes. And please note the numbers in the presentation are accurate. The subject site is shown in red, is located at the southeast corner of Kingsway and Joyce Street in the Victoria Fraser View of Colarney neighborhood.
Hi, Carly. Sorry, it's a clerk here. Could you please repeat yourself? You were actually garbled a little bit when you were mentioning the discrepancy.
Yes, thank you for letting me know. I was saying that there was a discrepancy in figure six of the referral report with respect to average unit size, and that this presentation contains the accurate numbers. So other things, the subject site is shown in red, it's located at the southeast corner of Kingsway and Joyce Street in the Victoria Fraser View of Colarney neighborhood. The site is Zone C2 and developed with a one-story retail use, a 7-Eleven store. The surrounding area is Zone C2 and develops with one- and two-story commercial buildings. Surfire Carlton Elementary School is located across Joyce Street, and there is also residential use south of the site. The site is approximately 1,250 square meters in size, with a street drainage of approximately 120 feet on Kingsway and 118 feet on Joyce Street. Are no residential tenants on site. Here's a map of local amenities. The site is located within approximately 800 meters of several parks, childcare facilities, and cultural and community spaces. The site is well-served by public transit with several bus stops.
Carly, we're just gonna put you on hold for one sec. I've got a point of privilege from councillor Kirby Young.
I get a microphone, thanks. Just a point of privilege, I'm wondering, there's a lot of scratching and background noise when the staff members are talking. I'm wondering if there's noise where they are, if there are other staff that might not be on mute, perhaps?
Sure. Carly, is there an opportunity to?
Yeah, we will.
Focus the audio a bit? Thanks.
Yeah, thanks for letting me know.
Okay, please continue then.
Thank you. So I was saying, the site is well-served by public transit with several bus stops along Kingsway, Joyce Street, and East 41st Avenue. The site is also located 600 meters from the Joyce-Collingwood Skytrain Station. Nearby bike lanes include the BCC Parkway and the 45th Avenue Local Street Bike Line. The Housing Vancouver Strategy sets a target of 20,000 new market rental housing units across the city, help addressing Vancouver's historically low rental vacancy rate. This rezoning application is being considered under the secured rental policy, previously known as Rental 100. The owner submitted a rezoning inquiry prior to the consolidation of the new secured rental policy and can continue to be assessed under this policy, which intends to secure rental housing units. For sites in the C2 zone, the policy provides general directions for consideration of additional height and density at the six stories. The rezoning application was submitted on January 14, 2021, and proposes to rezone the site from C2 to C1 to permit the development of a six-story mixed-use building containing 79 secured market rental units. Twenty-nine of the units are designed as family units in the form of two bedrooms. The density is 3.93 FSR and in the form of two bedrooms. The density is 3.93 FSR and building height is 24 meters. As part of the Restart Vancouver Initiative in response to COVID-19, this project will contribute to approximately 276 new onsite and offsite construction jobs during the initiative's recovery phase. The applicant is eligible to seek the DCL waiver for this application and will make that decision at the development permit stage. This slide shows the average market rent for newer buildings on the east side in the blue column, the DCL bylaw maximum average rents for the east side in 2021 in the green column, and the relative affordability of renting when compared to the cost of home ownership, shown in the red column. It also shows the proposed average unit sizes, which range from 363 square feet per studio to 606 square feet for a two-bedroom unit. With respect to proposed rental units, these will be secured through a housing agreement prohibiting the stratification of units.
Excuse me, planning staff. This is the clerk here. The presentation doesn't seem to be sharing on the WebEx. Could you check that you're sharing your presentation?
Yep. Thank you. Just a moment.
And, and, so Carly, was that the end of your presentation? We're on the Housing Vancouver Strategy page, policy context.
I'm just going to try and reconnect so that it can be fully reflected.
Chair, could I, it's Councillor Degenova. I can't put myself on the queue, but as a point of, maybe a point of privilege, I was going to ask if maybe a short two- or three-minute recess to allow staff to reconnect and make sure that everything is moving forward smoothly?
So we'll take a quick two-minute recess. Carly, you can, you can reset. And actually, let's, let's give it three minutes, and we'll come back in three. Thanks. Thanks, Carly. Please proceed.
Okay. So, following submission of the rezoning application, a city hosted virtual open house was held from March 15th to April 4th, 2021, on the Shaker City platform. The application drawings and details were made available online following application submission, along with my contact information and a form to submit feedback. In total, we received approximately 93 pieces of feedback. In general, there was support for the application, with key themes including the height, density, building design, and addition of increased housing stock and retail space. Some comments of concern were that the site was being underutilized, given its proposed proximity to major intersections, a desire for increased amenity space and improved building design. We also heard concerns that development will not provide adequately affordable housing. Staff assessment of proposals concludes the height and density are appropriate and consistent with what is permitted under the Secured Rental Policy. Design conditions are included in the appendix B to provide for an expanded above-ground amenity area. On affordable housing, the Secured Rental Policy intends to increase the supply of secured rental units. The Secured Rental Policy does not require below-market rent rates. In summary, staff recommends approval of this application, rezone 3304 Kingsway from C2 to CD1, subject to the conditions outlined in the appendix B of the report, as it needs to intend to secure rental policy. If approved, the application would contribute 79 new secured rental units. This concludes my presentation. Both staff and applicant team are available after presentation.
Great. Thanks, Carly. And is the applicant team here to speak to the application?
Yes, my name is Taiso Yamamoto, and I'm planning to make a brief presentation. I believe the clerks should have our presentation. They can put it up for us.
Great. Thanks, Taiso. And you're coming through loud and clear, so we'll just...
Great.
Second while we grab that presentation. Right. Okay. We've got that presentation up and running. Over to you, Taiso.
Okay, great. I don't see it actually on my screen. It's just in a tiny window. I don't know if anybody's having the same problem as I am.
Chair is going to say the same thing as Councillor Dominado.
It's just coming up now. It is visible on the orange cone.
There we go. Perfect.
Okay, we're good to go.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to make a brief presentation to highlight a few of the key features of this proposal, slightly different from some of the other Rental 100 projects that we have done. Next slide, please. So, as described by the presentation by staff, the site is currently a 7-Eleven and surface parking lot. So, the proposed building will complete the corner. It will reinforce the street wall and provide pedestrian activity and fine-grained retail. This will greatly improve the streetscape and urban character of this intersection. Next slide, please. The site is close to parks, schools, and different modes of public transit, and as a result, we feel like it's an ideal location for rental housing. Next slide. The building takes advantage of the geometry of the intersection by creating a flat iron corner and wrapping the entire facade with brick. Brick columns continue to the ground to define the small-grain retail and give warmth and a level of detail to the pedestrian realm. The facade will be robustly designed with exterior insulation to help both thermal and acoustic performance, and high-quality windows will be used to ensure that noise isolation to interior spaces is mitigated. Heating and cooling will also be provided to make sure that residents do not need to open windows to regulate their, their comfort. Next slide. This, this slide shows the residential entry area. So, from the beginning of the project, our client emphasized the need for details like these that create identity for the project and a sense of pride for residents. A local artist will be commissioned to provide a mural here, as well as other strategic locations, such as undersides of canopies along the retail frontages. So, this is another way that the project can help to contribute to the public realm. Next slide, please. One key aspect of the project is the focus on communal amenity spaces where the residents can meet. We are providing the standard 800-square-foot indoor amenity space on Level 2 with an outdoor courtyard space adjacent, but we're also proposing close to 6,000 square feet of indoor amenity space below grade. And this is in the form of a large gym, games room, and enhanced bike facilities. So, effectively, we're proposing to replace privately-owned cars with communal amenity space. Next slide, please. We are also taking full advantage of the roof of the building, providing 8,000 square feet of communal outdoor space. The rooftop provides multiple functions: children's play, urban agriculture, outdoor dining, and lounge areas. Next slide. This shows a couple of views of the rooftop amenity and how many different users can occupy the space at the same time. So, child's play, lounge areas, urban agriculture, dining, all with great views to the north. Next slide. So, the proposed development incorporates compact but well-laid-out and livable units. These views show interior perspectives from within our typical units. The photos at the top left are from another rental building by the same developer, showing the attention to detail and the careful planning that ensures the units work and are desirable for renters. Next slide. So, that concludes my presentation, and Jeremy Waldman from Hudson is also here to, to answer any questions you might have. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Taiso. All right. So, this is a chance for questions from council to staff or the applicant team. And for council, please note, this is the only opportunity for you to ask questions of the applicant. I see Councillors Swanson, Hardwick, and Kirby Young on the queue. Councillor Swanson?
Yeah. Is this going to be a pet-friendly building?
Counsel, Jeremy Waldman, Principal of Hudson Properties. Absolutely all our rental buildings are pet-friendly.
Okay, that's good. And what about the pollution from traffic? Because like the other one we just did, this is on a pretty busy intersection.
Yeah, I think as Taiso mentioned, the building will have air conditioning, all the residential units will have air conditioning, and allows tenants to close windows should they wish.
And there was a media article about...
Councillor Swanson, we kind of lost you for a minute there.
Do you have me now?
We got you now.
Okay. There was a, there was a media article about two-bedroom units at 532 square feet. Are you saying now that they're bigger than that?
Taiso, do you want to answer this question?
Sure. Yes, we've been working with staff to increase the unit sizes. There's also some different ways of the measurement of the units. So, for example, the city's policy for units measures to the inside walls of perimeter of the unit and as well excludes the storage that's located within the unit. So, when you compare it to CMHC or rental rates, those include those aspects. So, the units can be anywhere from 60 to 100 square feet larger than what's summarized in the staff table. So, with the design moving forward, our average two-beds are in the realm of 700 square feet.
Okay, because some of the pictures there, you had the bed in the living room, which seems a little bit cramped for the likes of me.
Yeah, just to clarify, oh, sorry. Just to clarify, those were images of the studio units, not the two-bed family units.
Are you planning on getting senior government financing for this?
I'll jump in here, Taiso. We, we are exploring opportunities through CMHC for attractive construction and takeout financing.
And you are seeking the DCL waiver?
At this stage, where the project sits, we are interested in proceeding with the DCL waiver.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
Thanks, Councillor Swanson. Councillor Kirby Young?
Yeah, thanks. I have a question for the applicant. I was really intrigued with the presentation on the amenity space and the specifically, in addition to the roof and the second floor, the below grade. And I'm wondering if there's specific sort of aspects to this site that lend itself to the below grade, or is that sort of a specific choice in terms of increasing the livability for residents? Were there certain conditions that made that, was that sort of a desire and a choice in terms of a competitive offering? Or were there certain conditions of the fiscal and nature of the site that supported that below-grade amenity space?
Yeah, councillor, I think the, the main reason for the extensive amenity space, both indoor and outdoor on the project, is sort of our desire as a developer to provide enhanced social ability within all our projects. And one way we can do that on this particular rental project is to go sort of above and beyond staff requirements of indoor amenity space. So, it's less of a site constraint and more of just a desire and our end to deliver better quality rental buildings in Vancouver.
Okay, that's good to know. Is that something that you've done before? Or is this, is this a first in the site, or is this something that you've, that you've tried to achieve with other projects?
We've, we've achieved other ways of socialability in other projects, and, you know, we've done a number of open courtyard schemes on projects where it's appropriate, typically on a four-story scheme, and that allows for a lot more social interaction amongst residents. We have not built this amount of indoor amenity space on a project of this size before.
Okay. And then, can I sort of ask a related question on this? Because, Councillor, I've had a number of discussions with respect to eliminating minimum parking requirements and maximums, and you're still aiming to put in 34 parking spaces. So, does it affect, you know, in the consideration on this project, sort of the number of parking spaces or underground levels that you have in terms of cost and excavation for sites or for parking? I'm interested in how those, how those factors get weighed against each other in a project like this.
Just to clarify, are you asking why we're proceeding with a parking relaxation and the costs associated with it?
Yeah. Well, I guess I'm asking because it says that the below-grade amenity, for example, is on the second level of parking, as to whether or not you sort, there's, you know, theoretically, could you have gone one level less? You'd have less excavation costs, you know, maybe more affordability, less GHD emissions, or would you be doing this many levels regardless? Because I guess I'm trying to figure out where those things intersect, if you will, right?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a, that's a complicated one to answer, being cognizant of time. But it is a tight site. So, I guess coming back to your, your initial question on site constraints, it is a tight site to access parking on P2. Your parking ramp takes up a large portion of the site. Proceeding with a, a parking relaxation, such as on Joyce and Kingsway on this project, we, we did have to provide a higher number of bike parking stalls on site, and that's something that we would typically do anyways. And that lent itself to being on P2 because of the, the site constraints. If we were to provide all the parking requirement and not go for a TDM or for a, a parking relaxation, we'd probably be roughly one and a half levels underground because the parking ramp takes up so much of that space. So, for us to go slightly larger on P2 and instead of vehicle parking, provide for more bike parking, just made sense to us.
Okay. No, I appreciate the perspective. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Councillor Kirby Young. Councillor Weeb?
Yeah. Kind of follow-up question, because I was also really intrigued in the amenity space underground. How is, does this work with total FSR for a building? Is this excluded? And are we seeing buildings that have excess parking space being able to shift and do changey uses to, to have more amenity space? Because this looks like a great way of increasing the livability of our projects.
I think I'll let you take this, Taiso.
Sure. Our, working with staff, since this is below grade and amenity space, it would not be counted towards the FSR. The one thing that would make it, make it a bit challenging to retrofit, say, another project, would be accommodating all of the mechanical systems that would be needed to provide the ventilation and insulation of those spaces. So, I think it's great for us to do it from the start, and it would be more challenging to retrofit something that is just parking now, for example.
Okay. And then, is this something that you're seeing from the rental market, that having large amenity spaces make this building? the rental market that having large amenity spaces make this building um, more attracting? And so you're seeing people willing to live in the smaller units as long as they're having the large amenity space and kind of community connection that this building provides?
I think in short, the answer is yes. Um, I mean, the units are not that much smaller than other projects we've completed and we're seeing in Vancouver. But I think more importantly, um, it just, it provides for provides for happier tenants, happier buildings, um, by providing this amenity space. Um, we find that when we properly design rental buildings, there is less tenant turnover, which is a great thing. Um, so absolutely, there's, there's certainly a demand from tenants that we're seeing for this type of amenity space.
Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate that.
And Counselor Bly.
Thanks Chair. And just one uh, follow up question to the applicant. Noting um, in the proposed residential floor plans, that some of the one bedroom square um, footage, the, the size of the actual one bedroom is the same as a studio. And I'm just curious how that will affect um, rents, recognizing that rents for a one bedroom um, are approximately three hundred dollars more than a studio, but the size of the actual unit won't doesn't look like it will actually change a studio to one bedroom. So just curious how that will be um, costed in terms of.
Well, if we do proceed with the DCL relaxation, which we're looking to, we're capped on the rents. Um, but certainly a, a, a traditional one bedroom, although the same size, but it has a separate bedroom as opposed to an open studio will, will rent for more.
Okay, even though the size of the unit is the same?
It, it'll rent for a little bit more. There's certainly more demand for a one bedroom than there is for a studio.
Okay, I'll leave it there. Thanks.
Great. Thanks, Counselor Bly. And Counselor Carr.
Yeah, thanks very much Chair. Uh, just a couple of questions and follow up. Um, my first one has to do with the comment you made of um, to the, to the applicant, the comment made around um, uh, air conditioning, I think it was air conditioning, but um, uh, that there, there would be uh, some, you know, uh, some form of clean air in the building. Are those heat pumps that you're using in the building so that there would be heating as well as, as um, air conditioning?
Thank you for your question. Yes, there will be both heating and cooling. Um, there'll be a variable refrigerant flow. We regulate the cooling through aerosourced heat pumps.
Got it. That's great. Okay, so those would be um, both cleaning the air, um, providing um, you know, safe spaces during both heat domes and extreme cold weather, right?
Yeah, that's correct. It would be, that would mean that because you can cool and heat, um, you're not needing to open your windows to ventilate. You also have heat recovery ventilators that provide ventilation from, from bathroom and kitchen exhaust.
Okay, that's, that's good. Thank you. Um, a, a second question has to do with the fact that this report, um, of course written by staff, but I'm interested in your comment on this. Um, notes that the vacancy rate uh, for apartment or for rentals, um, purpose rentals has uh, actually um, uh, sort of improved. Uh, twenty twenty-one, um, they note that it's at two point eight percent. Uh, for a long time it had hovered under uh, one percent, so two point eight percent for twenty twenty-one. Um, and the, the report specifically notes five point four percent as a vacancy rate in this part of Vancouver, Southeast Vancouver. Um, so are you tracking that information or is there, what's your sense of what's happening to the rental market then?
Jeremy, do you want to field this one?
Sorry, I was having a bit of a technical difficulty there. Um, I, I can't imagine that the vacancy rate uh, in anywhere in East Vancouver is five and a half percent. I think that's, that's a very high number. I'm not sure where that number came from.
CNHC is, is the quote.
Yeah, that's, that's a pretty reputable organization, but I, I just can't imagine that vacancy rate is five and a half percent in this location. But I mean, I don't, we don't track it obviously as closely as CMHC, but uh, say my gut is it's, it's lower than that.
Okay, I'll, I'll actually take the last little bit of my time to ask staff that same question. Uh, but thank you for your answers. Appreciate it. Staff, do you want to answer that question in terms of the five point four percent vacancy rate noted in the report for Southeast Vancouver?
Uh, thanks Counselor. It's Andy Mobla, Senior Planner for Housing Projects. Um, yeah, we were um, just discussing it as well offline. The vacancy rate uh, for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one have very much been affected by COVID. Uh, and so what, what we saw in, in the data is that there were a lot of uh, renters that simply left the city. Uh, and so we had vacancies where we didn't previously. Um, that's my anecdotal kind of explanation of the data. Uh, but what we would expect is those vacancy rates to unfortunately come back to uh, very much below what we consider healthy vacancy rate of around three percent. Uh, but it is uh, from kind of our analysis, an anomaly that has a lot to do with, with COVID and just uh, the movement of people out of the city during the pandemic. I hope that that helps clarify.
Yep, no, it's a um, it was a curious number from my point of view, um, not one that I expected to see. So um, that's why I'm, I'm seeking some explanation that it's a, you know, fairly good explanation. Things lots of change, things have changed under COVID. But thanks a lot. Um, that's good for me.
Great. Thanks, Counselor Carr. And I see Counselor Bly is back on the queue. Counselor Bly.
Yeah, thanks Chair. I actually just wanted to ask staff a similar question related to the size of unit um, and proposed uh, average rents. And I guess my question is, um, when looking at this particular application, there are proposed one bedroom units that are under four hundred square feet. I think it sits at about three eighty, maybe three seventy-five. And average rent for a one bedrooms is uh, around eighteen hundred. So I, I guess I just want to get a sense in considering this application that it fits with the policy, which I understand it does, which is what we're actually deciding on today. But also, um, is this sort of the extreme end of size of unit and cost per square foot that we would likely see in a, in a, in a um, for profit rental um, building such as this?
We have some staff on the.
Um, thank you. We're just taking a moment to look for that information.
Um, Chair, I'm happy to have staff come back with a response after we hear from speakers to keep things moving.
Oh, that's, that's very thoughtful. Thank you, Counselor Bly. Okay, well, we, we, we can revisit that after speakers. And seeing no further uh, counselors on the queue, we can actually move on to hearing from the public. So, speaker number one, uh, is Rick Hurlbut. We have Speaker Number One, Rick Hurlbut on the line.
I'm here.
Hi, Rick. We hear you loud and clear. Please proceed.
Great. Uh, good evening, Council. My name's Rick Hurlbut. I'm a resident of Vancouver. Last week, I emailed a condensed version of my comments and I hope you had a chance to review them. I live in the Renfrew-Collingwood neighborhood and frequent the shops along this stretch of Kingsway. I'm not opposed to the redevelopment of this site into rental accommodation as such. You all know that the city needs more rental accommodation. However, I do believe there are some serious oversights in the referral report which need your attention. Firstly, while the referral report includes the requirement for a safe disclosure statement to environmental services, it fails to mention that there was previously a gas station on the current seven eleven site. Did the developer neglect to provide this information? Uh, did the city not check its records? I do not recall exactly when the gas pumps were decommissioned. It could be a decade ago. Had the old storage tank even been removed? From what I do remember, there wasn't any kind of soil contamination remediation on the site. I believe that soil contamination is a very real possibility, which could considerably set this project back. Incidentally, this would be the second seven eleven to close in the neighborhood, the other being at Rupert and Twenty Second Avenue, also to make way for a new rental building. My second concern uh, has to do with the community amenity contributions on this project, which have been waived to encourage rental accommodations. But any future tenants are just as much in need of community services as anyone else. For example, Collingwood Park is just four hundred meters from the development site. It has a baseball diamond, a basketball court, a really nice little pele ground and numerous mature trees. It's also one of the parks designated by the park board to allow uh, the consumption of alcohol. As identified in the park board's washroom strategy, Collingwood Park is badly in need of washroom upgrades. And the existing decommissioned waiting pool is one of several identified in the park board's van slash strategy for conversion to a more economical splash pool. For the sake of these community amenities, the calculated seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars in CACs on this project should apply. For people without a backyard, this would go a long way to enhancing their lives and that of their children. And if this project can afford all those wonderful onsite amenities, it can surely contribute to the larger community. So to recap my main points, high probability of soil contamination and really needing those CAC dollars to address previously identified neighborhood park facility upgrades. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Rick. Uh, don't see any questions from council, but really appreciate uh, you taking the time to speak to us and and especially bringing up the bit about soil remediation and the past history of the site, which I'm sure is illuminating for many of us. Thank you. Uh, we are now moving on to speaker number two, Nathan Davidovich. Nathan, we have you on the line.
Do you hear me now? Yes?
Yep, it's, you're on.
I don't, it's still echoing. I don't know, I don't know why there is the echoing thing today, but anyhow, thank you, uh, Council. Um, I just go through the report and point out all the mistakes that the staff is reporting to you, telling you that this is Fraser View when this is Collingwood. It's not Fraser View. It's part of the Collingwood BIA area as well. You know, I don't understand, you know, staff not knowing where places are. Uh, that's on page uh, three of the referral report. Uh, on the same page, they say the distance to Central Park is nine hundred and twenty-five meters, but a distance to Swan Guard Stadium, which is just the beginning of Central Park, is one point one kilometers. You know, uh, at the next page, page four, local school capacity, again, they are refusing to add the private schools in the area. There is at least two big private schools in the area and that makes a difference. That's why people move to the area because of the private schools. So the local school capacity is the public school, but they, you know, they should add the private schools in there. Um, all right, uh, if we go on to um, I presume, uh, well, might as well go to page, page ten, I presume the transportation and parking, well, here we again, uh, you know, the, the, they are talking about the bus route and for some reason they brought the bus route from North Vancouver, the R2, for some reason into the report, when it is the R4, of course, in Vancouver. So, you know, but I mean, again, it's the whole idea, what is a proper bus service? And what's a frequent service and so forth? And again, uh, as I pointed out, the Kingsway bus service is not quite twenty-four seven. And similarly on Joyce and Forty First, it's not twenty-four seven. Uh, if we are trying to promote people to use transit and active transportation, then twenty-four seven bus service has to be provided in Vancouver in the same way it's provided in Toronto, Montreal, Seattle and other cities. And uh, unless, you know, the report gives you all that information, then you don't know. The other thing about the report, it tells you that it's six minutes to walk the six hundred meters to Joyce-Collingwood Station. I, I don't think anybody can walk it in six minutes. It's more like ten minutes for the average person and older people and so forth. It's probably fifteen to even twenty minutes with a walker and so forth. So again, the statistics are not right and that's what Counselor Hardwick was trying to point out, that many of the statistics are not being presented properly by the city staff. And, and that's unfortunate, you know, there's also trees shown on um, on the board number forty-five out of forty-eight. It says the tree spacings are, are nine meters apart. Well, you know, the, the length of a, of a bus, a standard bus is twelve meter. Articulated bus is eighteen meters. Here again, we are, you know, spending money for nothing for, to, to plant trees that are going to be broken and uh, uh, by the passengers are getting the, as they unload and, and load the buses. And uh, so uh, you know, there are just so many things that are not presented properly and I, I just don't understand why uh, cannot a, a proper list of items could be listed and proper reports written. Uh, same that there are in other cities. Uh, and, and, and why Vancouver is so far behind, I, I have no idea. Uh, you know, new staff, new senior staffs who are not from Vancouver maybe. But um, so thank you for um, for listening to me.
Great. Thanks, Nathan. Uh, you timed that perfectly. Thank you very much. And uh, speaker number three, Celine McRae-Hamdi. We have Speaker Number Three, Celine McRae-Hamdi on the line.
Hello again, it's me.
Hello.
I'm still, still frustrated having to call in and beg for a parking lot in a seven eleven to be secured rental for seventy-nine units for sixty years minimum. That, um, and I appreciate that these aren't affordable. Uh, I mean, I think it's what sixteen hundred for a studio if the DCL waiver is granted, which is nineteen thousand dollars a year. Um, but these are the rates that the city set. The, if the size, the size and the price and they meet the qualifications and it's better than the, there, there's better than the secured rental housing available in the neighborhood because there isn't anything like this. There's unsecured rental, which is a million, uh, million dollar houses that are probably, could be evicted from at any time. They have ridiculous requirements that either you have to be a student or a young professional or explicitly no students, no young professionals. I appreciate very much that they're uh, going to be a, a pro pet household because almost all the ones in the neighborhood explicitly ban pets. And I'm, I'm here once again. It's advised by the city's policy of six, six stories on an arterial without a dollar of public funds to build it. And it's just enough, it's doing what the city asks. So why does it have to? it have to go through an approval process if it's meeting all the existing policies? So, and frankly, for the comment about if new tenants are just as much going to use community features as existing, why aren't existing residents being asked to chip in for new improvement? Why is it only the people, say, born after Expo 86 who have to pay more? Thank you. That's all.
Great, and thank you very much. I see no questions from council, but appreciate you taking the time to speak to us. And just want to remind speakers that they should make their comments and limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. They should also state whether they are in support or in opposition of the recommendations, and if they are a resident of Vancouver. But I do want to remind that we do have a pretty busy schedule and that it's not open mic night at the comedy club, so please stick to the application. So with that, I'll invite speaker number three, Alexander Hayden Stein, to return. Oh.
Speaker number four is not on the line.
No, that was speaker number three, and speaker number four is not either? Oh, my mistake, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Speaker number four, Alexander Hayden Stein, not on the line. Do we have speaker number five, Alvin Locke? Okay. All right, nobody else is on the line, so we will move over to, if any speakers for this item wish to speak to council, it's called toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Any speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium when prompted by the clerk. So again, we will do two more call-outs for any speakers to this item, and if there are and they wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound. And last call-out for speakers to this item, if they would like to speak to council on the CD1 rezoning for 3304 Kingsway, call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound. So before we close off the speakers list, we'll just take a five-minute break to see if anybody is calling in. Council will be back in five minutes. All right, and we're back, and the clerks tell me that we do have a new speaker signed up to speak, Matt Demark. And Matt Demark, just a reminder-
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, and please let us know if you're a resident of Vancouver, if you support or oppose the recommendations, and speaking to the merits of the-
Awesome, yeah, no, I definitely live in Vancouver. I live in the neighborhood in question, and I'm generally in favor. I want to just start off by saying, you know, thank you to all the councillors and the city staff for all the hard work over the last year. We're in the home stretch, you know, finishing off 2022, so thank you guys for all the hard work. What I will say as someone who lives in this community is that, you know, all the rental that we could get is great, we need it. Obviously, these places are very small and very expensive. Work needs to be done on that end. A lot of work needs to be done on that end. And I think one last comment I will say is that as this area is, you know, gentrified, obviously it's happening, especially along Kingsway and Joyce area, it's a very important intersection for this community, very bustling if you come here on a nice spring, sunny day, lots of shops, lots of markets, lots of restaurants. I just implore you to think commercial space, community space. There's a lot of different, you know, groups from different backgrounds, different ethnic groups that really need community space, and their businesses need places where they can operate at a decent rate as well. So that's the only thing I've got to say. So thank you guys very much for all your work, and have a great night.
Thanks very much, Matt, and appreciate your comments. No questions from council, but we do appreciate the time you took to speak to us tonight. All right, folks, so with no further speakers on the list, we are, this is an opportunity for council to ask questions of staff. The speaker's list, sorry, the speaker's list is now closed. Right, my mistake. Does the applicant have any closing comments?
No comments from me, thank you.
Great, and do staff have any closing comments?
No, we don't. Thank you very much for listening to us tonight.
Great, okay, so I do see questions from councillors of staff, starting with councillor Bly.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just wondering if staff had a response to my question. I was wanting just to provide that opportunity for staff to answer that question from before.
Thank you, councillor Bly. So the market will help determine what the unit to be rented at, which is in line with the secured rental policy. However, in terms of the overall livability, staff do have conditions in appendices. There's a condition 1.2 and 1.4 that speaks to having improved unit plans and better spaces to support activities for family living, and that would be in line with the high-density house for families and children guidelines.
Okay, so I guess, just to clarify, and I appreciate that response, my question really was, on a spectrum of affordability and livability in terms of unit size and price per square foot, this seems to me that we are on sort of more, we're considering an application here that's, where we're looking at a one-bedroom, under 400 square feet, priced potentially in and around $1,800 a month, and appreciate the comment that the rent will be priced at what the market will bear. With that being said, when we normalize this in our policies, then that typically drives the market as well. So I guess what I'm asking is for clarification, would this be at the more extreme end of the spectrum of affordability and livability in terms of price per square foot and size of the unit?
Thanks for the question and the clarification. We've been trying to kind of dig into the question, and, you know, I would say that it is on the lower end of what we would normally see for a one-bedroom unit, but the, you know, the, it really is what the market will bear for a one-bedroom, but I would tend to agree, like it is on the smaller side. I don't know that it's necessarily a precedent. I think the applicant would consider this as something that they think is possible in this part of the city. But, but yeah, I do think, you know, the range in the unit size is quite broad, depending on where it is in the city and what kind of project it is. And so we see variations of that in the applications that come across our desks. This would be on the lower end. I don't know if that helps. We're not being very specific, but it is really something that we see quite a bit of variation in with applications in front of us.
Okay, could you just point me to where in the secured rental policy, I'm just going to do a quick search here, but I just want to see where price per square foot is stipulated in terms of size of, I know we have minimum size of unit, but I'm wondering where does that intersect with the average rents? As a speaker said, it is our policy that dictates the rents and the correlating size of units. So would you, are you able to just appoint me, and again, I'm happy to go off the queue?
Sure. It's Annie Mobles, again, senior housing planner. I might ask some of the development planning staff to weigh in. I'm wondering if what you're referencing is the DCL waiver maximum average unit size? And so the DCL waiver program has a maximum average unit size that must be met in order to be eligible for the waiver, but otherwise, the unit size, these are either rents, isn't something that we would stipulate through policy. Is that answering your question?
So there's no minimum in the regular policy? It's only in the DCL waiver?
Yeah, and it's a maximum unit size in the DCL waiver, yes.
Okay.
And, yeah, and my understanding is the applicant will decide to, later, to whether or not they're going to take the waiver, so that's not necessarily at play here either.
I see, okay.
Did you help?
Yes, it does for now, that's great. Yeah, thanks very much, Chair, I'll leave it there.
Thank you.
Next, councillor Kirby Young.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. And so, questions to staff, I want to follow up on the questions I asked earlier of the applicant, and it was with respect to the DCL bylaw in section 3.1A that's referenced on page 13 of the report. I was reviewing it earlier today ahead of this meeting, and my question really is that, and let me try to ask this clearly, that my understanding of the DCL bylaw is that in order to potentially qualify for DCL waiver, the units must be at the specified maximum size. And so my question here is that, because we've got a lot of feedback and written comments from the public here about concerns about the small size of the units and the livability, so do we feel that that potential to secure waivers, sometimes applicants do or do not, is actually driving smaller units? That's my first part of my question.
It's Annie Mobles, thanks for the question. You know, I'd be speculating, I'm not necessarily sure it's possible to answer that. I think every application is different, depending on the circumstances, where it is in the city and what they think those rents could be. There's real variation even considered in the DCL waiver, in the DCL waiver bylaws between Westside and Eastside, so it's difficult to say. So we, through the DCL waiver process, we have a maximum average that they must meet across unit types. And so some of the, for example, one-bedrooms can be a bit bigger, and some of them can be a bit smaller, but collectively, they can't be, as an average, bigger. So, you know, it is possible to speculate that that's happening here, but it's difficult to say.
Okay. Yeah, no, thanks. I appreciate that that's also sort of a broader policy question, and I'm just going to ask a couple of follow-ups for clarity. So put another way, that if an applicant did not meet the maximum unit sizes, they could not be considered to be eligible for the DCL waiver. Is that correct?
That's right, and the DCL waiver process has checks at both development permit and occupancy permit for both the average rents and then the average maximum unit sizes, so staff check that throughout the regular- So staff check that throughout the regulatory process. Yeah, and they must meet it. Absolutely. Yeah.
Okay. And then the last sort of follow-up clarification I have, because I heard two different things earlier when I asked a question previously on this topic, and as did councillor Swanson ask a follow-up. And that's on the DCL bylaw, section 3.1D, AD, I believe, when it speaks about 20% of the residential floor area must be counted with average rents per unit type that don't exceed the following specified rents. So there's an affordability component built in. I heard two different things. Can you clarify if the applicant goes for the DCL waiver, if they must provide 20% of the floor space at below-market rents, or they must not?
In this project, there is no affordability requirement. It might be, I don't have it at my fingertips, but that might, that section might be referencing the below-market and MRRP-type projects where the percentage of units that are secured as affordable qualify the project for the DCL waiver. And those remaining units, the 80% remaining, don't have a restriction on them for rents. So they can, they can charge kind of what the market will bear on the remaining 80%, but the 20% of moderate income in that case for the MRRP projects would qualify them.
Okay. I understand the MRRP, and I mean to believe with the points, just that I want to get clarity, because it is not fully clear, at least to me in reading, specifically that, do we, is it, can I reflect this back then to you? If I'm looking at the DCL bylaw 3.1AD, that D is not a requirement of receiving the DCL waiver? Is that, or is that not correct?
It wouldn't be for all projects, no. So a straight-up secured rental project with no affordability is eligible to take the waiver. And, and the rents are restricted per the, per the bylaw, for those, as you kind of can see in the table in the, in the planning report. For projects that have a requirement for below-market, a certain percentage of the floor area, there is a different DCL bylaw route, or, sorry, a DCL waiver route. So there's, there's different ways that we implement the DCL bylaw depending on the kind of project it is.
Okay. I'm out of time, so I'm going to follow up on that broader policy question, sort of outside of the forum, but thank you for the response.
Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Boyle.
Thanks, Chair. I also have a question related to the size of units. And I'm wondering if staff can just give us a clearer sense of how, what the accessibility require, sort of basic building code accessibility requirements are, and how units of this size would comply?
Hi, this is Grace John. I'm from planning. Thanks for the question. Yeah, we do have the policies and regulations and guidelines to regulate the unit sizes. Vancouver zoning by was specified, the minimum unit sizes is 400 square feet. And the director of the planning may permit the floor areas no less than 320 square feet for the rental unit. But the city doesn't regulate the minimum unit sizes for the family unit. From the guidelines of the family housing, that requires the unit design to meet the needs for family living and set up some criteria for the unit size and the layout, such as the H bedroom should be large enough to accommodate a bed, a dresser, a desk, or table, or some floor area for playing in children's bedroom. Yeah, that's what we are, when we review the units, we're looking at how to review those unit sizes. In terms of the building code, I probably, applicants probably can give you more details about how that meets the VBL. Thanks.
Okay, great. It's a broader policy question that I also have related to this, of course, but more projects with smaller spaces we're seeing. So I will leave the rest of that question for another time.
Is that it for you, councillor Boyle?
Yes, thanks, Chair.
Great. You know, I'm just going to add myself to the queue, seeing nobody else on the, on the list. I guess, just first off, and a question for planning staff on, on the determination for DCL waivers, is this, I'm assuming this is a matter on this project of collaborating and reviewing the pro forma. Do we make those pro formas where we're talking about DCL waivers? Do we make that public by matter of process?
Thanks for the question, Annie Moblis, for housing projects. So, this project is CAC exempt, which allows the applicant to claim the waiver at the DP stage. So, if that answers your question, that the pro forma analysis isn't something that is part of the consideration here?
Okay. So generally, it's not something we do at all?
Yeah. And it wouldn't typically be something that's shared publicly if it was a project that had a CAC kind of pro forma negotiation attached to it.
Okay. And again, that speaks to a larger policy issue. So I'll leave that there. We did hear from the first speaker on this item about the, this site possibly being contaminated from being a gas station in a past life. Do we know about the provenance of this site and if there are soil remediation issues that have been dealt with or not?
Thank you for your question. So, there is a rezoning condition, 2.8, that requires a site disclosure statement to be submitted to Environmental Services, and if necessary, handle any remediation arrangements for the site. So a certificate of compliance will be issued by the Ministry of Environment prior to any building permit issuance.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Seeing no further questions from council, council will now make a decision on this application. Do we have a mover for the recommendation?
No move. Councillor Dijonova.
Councillor Dijonova, seconder? Seconded by councillor Kirby Young. Right. Is there any debate? Seeing nobody on the queue. Oh, wait, no, oh, I spoke too soon. Councillor, I really spoke too soon. All right. Starting with councillor Swanson.
Yeah, I'm afraid that this is going to create business gentrification. It's another situation. One of the speakers said this is being built without a dollar of public funds, but actually, a DCL waiver and a CAC waiver are.
No, they're not.
In my, in my book.
I'm sorry. Okay, sorry. There was a little bit of cross chatter on your, on your line there. Please continue.
So, in any event, we're giving a DCL waiver, we're giving a CAC waiver. It sounds like the proponent may go for a federal government financing, and we're not getting any affordability. So that is a problem for me. That's it.
Okay. Thanks, councillor Swanson. Councillor Bly.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I am not going to support this application. I really struggle with the unit size. And, you know, I just want to say that I, I understand the notion of smaller living spaces, shared amenity space, the benefits that that provides, creating community. I'm a really big proponent of that, as sort of where things are going in terms of how we live in smaller spaces and density and long-term outlook. I just can't get my head around how there'll be a studio for 400 square feet at whatever the market will bear, and then a one bedroom at smaller than a studio that will pay a one-bedroom fee. I just, I looked at the secured rental policy. It does actually say, despite the feedback, that a minimum of 320 square feet is the absolute minimum that is allowed under the secured rental policy, both with the DCL waiver bylaw as part of the policy, but also in terms of the, I'm just pulling it up here, in terms of the prescribed rental, residential rental that requires a rezoning also includes 320 square feet. So, I just think that this has taken to an extreme what the intent of the policy is. And we're making decisions here based on applications that fit the policy. And I think this one is pushing way up against what would be deemed, I think, not, not a livable situation. Two-bedroom, 532 square feet, assuming there's two parents in the home, but maybe not, even one parent and, and a child, and these are being suggested as, as all-family units. The quality of life and, and what I think is mapped out in terms of rents, I just don't think we've hit the mark with this application myself. And it will probably pass. I think we have a broader policy conversation to be having here, where we're much clearer in terms of how these unit sizes match up with, with the rent. And young people are really struggling in terms of affordability. And they're going to work and they're coming home, and they're going to be living in tiny shoeboxes. That quality of life is not there. And I don't think as a council, we want to be on record for, for sort of blindly just supporting them. We need to do better, I'd say, than what's coming out of this particular application. And all due respect to the applicant, I just, I just can't support it.
Thank you, councillor Bly. Councillor Boyle.
Thanks. I just wanted to say I share some concerns about smaller living spaces, particularly for accessibility reasons. And I appreciate that through conversations with staff, the units in this proposal actually will be a bit larger than what we're seeing in the report. We've, we've seen and heard in the news a number of proposals where unit sizes are getting smaller, and that is a general trend concerns me. On the other hand, I was really excited to see the variety and increase of shared amenity spaces in this proposal. And, and I certainly hear interest and support for that type of space, not only because it increases the amount of space that, that renters have across their building, but also for the community that it builds across a building, and the opportunities that it gives for folks sharing the building to get to know each other, and, and improve quality of life through, through those relationships in that community. So, so I'm glad to see that. I will be supporting this proposal. I hope we see more types of creative expansion of shared amenity spaces, certainly in co-housing projects, something we hear about in the Happy City work, important feature that we hear about. And so I'm interested to see what those ideas look like going forward, while hopefully not continuing to see smaller and smaller individual living spaces at the same time. But again, we'll be supporting this project.
Thanks, councillor Boyle. Councillor Kirby Young.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I think that when we have a number of projects that kind of come across our desk in the context of the public hearing, they often raise important policy discussions, and they often illuminate sort of the realities of how the policies are applied in real life, which is, I think, you know what, council, and I hear some of my colleagues expressing here. And we did hear from the public a number of concerns with respect to unit size. I'm always reminded in terms of how, you know, which hat we're wearing, and when we sit in different forums, and what our obligations are in terms of administering policy, if you will. And so the, the job that we always have, even though a particular application or a particular project may illuminate challenges with the broader policy, is, in a public hearing setting, does something meet the current policy of the day, and is the applicant meeting that stated standard? Because they put their application report in good faith, city bank covers a policy, it states requirements, does it or does it not meet it? And which is, you know, in sort of a simplified way, sort of the legislative responsibility of council, if you will, right? Which is sort of different, I think, than some of the broader policy questions and philosophical issues that are being raised here. I do share the concerns around the smaller spaces, and I think that that's an important takeaway. I think that, you know, as referenced in terms of accessibility, but also just generally in terms of our aging population that we have with seniors and folks that may need mobility aids, those are important considerations. I also have sort of considerations in my head, such as recent data reports that have come out that have said that in the city of Vancouver, our rents for one bedroom went up by, I think it was about 13.5%. And we were sort of topping the country. And some of those increases, which were above me on what you would expect to hear, and I hear feedback all the time that we do need more housing options. So people want more rental, they want it in different neighborhoods, of course, they want it to be more affordable. These are all things. And so it's like, is this incremental progress towards that goal? And I think that it is. I think some of the, the one positive, I'm also happy to see sort of a broader application of amenity space, because I would say, just like people are living in smaller spaces overall, we have a finite land base, we have more people coming into Vancouver, the city inevitably will grow over time. And, you know, the days of single-family homeownership are gone. You know, people are sort of changing their perspective around how they're going to be able to live in the urban environments, and things like parks and outdoor space becomes ever more important in community amenities. And so does, I think, the onsite amenities in their own homes and buildings. So I do like the combination of the required indoor amenity space with the contiguous access to the outdoor on the second floor, the rooftop, and then I think the ground level below, more amenity space versus less is better. So I think that's a positive. But I think that this has raised some important discussions for council. And I certainly will be following up on some things like clarity around the DCL waiver and how that's applied. That's something that's been raised for me. And I think it's a broader question in terms of funding community amenities, but also is the city getting the value in terms of affordability requirements and how that is and is not applied to a specific project or not for that requirement for, you know, 20% if you will of below-market. So, important considerations. But I do want to reflect back that, you know, had a chance to read all the comments that came in from the public and heard loud and clear about some of the concerns on living size. But I also think that the public will be critical if we're not adding to the rental stock right now, because we're hearing that it's very difficult to find. And I think to the comments that were made by councillor Carr earlier, that even though, I saw one number that stood on the report, it was about, an average CMHC number is about 2.8% vacancy, but in this particular area, it was about 1.4. And staff always say that a healthy vacancy rate in a market is about 3% to 5%, right? So we're still below in this specific market. So I am going to support it. But there are some real takeaways, I think, in terms of us looking at and trying to continually improve our policies as we try to tackle the challenges of both availability and affordability. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Dijonova.
Thanks very much. You know, in, in reflection, I had some comments prepared, and, and some that I'd added to. But after hearing some of the comments of my colleagues, I think that, that we need to address some, you know, in, in a policy perspective perhaps. And I thought we did that during sort of our housing updates. And I have to tell you, being here two terms already, and having experience working in both private sectors, development and nonprofit development sectors, and seeing how long it takes to build housing, maybe we could, maybe if we expedited processes and, you know, had some kind of hope for this, when it was one of the first motions I brought forward, this council supported. But it's not just about speed here. It's, it is about supply, and it's the right supply. And I think we have to consider that. And for some people, a smaller unit is okay. For some people, it makes the difference between whether or not they can live in Vancouver with their family, and they may make some sacrifices to do that. But we have said as a city that we're committed to working with our park board, that we're committed to providing more green space. I remember being a park board commissioner, and years before that, even knowing that the park board had a commitment and a goal for 2.5 acres of green space per 1,000 people, so that you could have a living room and a community, and, and an outdoor yard. It just happened to be your community space and your park, and you shared it with people. I know many people, as I'm sure lots of other people do as well, who prefer to live in that urban environment. And one of those people, I mean, has actually shared that very publicly. You know, a friend of mine, Adrian Crook, five kids, one condo. So to councillor Bly's call, and said, you know, it's not livable for a family if it's X number of square feet. There is, here's someone with five children who lives in 1,000 square feet, and, you know, not only celebrates that, but shares that with others. So I think that there are ways forward here. I'm not saying that's how everyone. I'm not saying that's how everyone should live. And as someone who also works in accessible housing and looking at how we make it accessible and to adaptability level three for a wheelchair to turn in a radius, you need extra square feet. But there's other places that you can have, you know, some trade-offs. So I don't think that unit size should be the be all, end all. And I think that this council, you know, considering this is our first meeting of the last year of this term, has to consider, do we really want to split hairs over unit sizes? Or do we want to stay true to our commitment that we will build more affordable housing? And I am going to stay true to that commitment. And I can say those words, but I think they're also supported by my voting record. So I will be supporting this. And I'm not saying that these units are right for everyone, just as others aren't. You know, just as there are some people that couldn't afford or wouldn't want a townhome or a single, you know, a single-family detached property. I still have some hope for homeownership overall, affordable homeownership. And I'll be pushing that forward and continuing. I think I'm on motion number 14. But also, being of Italian heritage, you know, spending a lot of time in my childhood and adulthood in Europe, I can tell you that this would be like a typical unit size for family. Like, we would not be talking about a small unit. The units are smaller. And I think when we look at livability and sustainability, we also have to consider that as well. So, you know, I'm just urging my colleagues to also consider that and challenge yourselves as to what we're seeing as livable and where we consider that. Where do, you know, how do we form our perspectives on how much space is enough space? Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Carr.
Thanks. This is a good discussion by council, I think, raising points that have really been accelerated by, I think, the situation we faced around COVID, the need for rental housing in particular, need for family space. I mean, with need for good quality living space, especially as many of us have been working so much more out of the home space. So size of unit is, I think, an important discussion that we need to have. And the waiver of DCLs and CACs is an important discussion to have. We're dealing with policy here that was developed. This particular policy had its origins in Rental 100 brought in when I was on my first term in council. And it was because developers at that point were really making a lot of money on condos. And not very many people were, or developers were building rental. And so there was an enticement to build rental at that time with the waiver of DCLs and potentially CACs. That may not be the case anymore. It's time to revisit the policy. I would agree with the councillors who have said that. Rental has become a more popular form of development than it was back then in comparison to condo development. And, you know, maybe those same enticements aren't needed. However, countering that to a bit, if we want to get development that's more at scale within a neighborhood, like six stories versus very tall rental buildings, maybe those waivers are needed. I think that's a discussion council needs to have in reviewing these policies. But the policies are in place. This application is following them. The other points that I want to make have to do with the size of unit and size of units that other councillors have raised. I do believe we also have to look at that size of unit in the context of so many more people working from home. COVID, one hopes, is not going to be with us in the same way it has been forever. I'm very hopeful we're going to see a change. But I do think the virtual meetings that many people have become more accustomed to, the working at home conditions, cause us to take a good, hard look at the size of living spaces for people in order to have that quality of life and the ability to be able to work at home and still have family space there. Mitigating that in this particular development, and I think one of you has already mentioned this, is the fact that there is a very, very considerable amount of amenity space. And I really appreciate the architect and the developer for putting that amenity space in, not only the underground gym space and that thing, but the upper roof, outdoor amenity space with gardens, places to eat, et cetera. That totally helps in my mind mitigate the smaller unit size of the living areas. I also want to mention a couple of other things. I'm very pleased that heat pumps are going in. You know, that is a real resilience factor. We can expect more heat domes, air quality advisories. And those heat pumps provide for secure, safe, healthy indoor spaces for people. And I, you know, think that that is absolutely the wave of the future in terms of what we need. And finally, I want to just comment on the design. I really was attracted with the, maybe it's because I, you know, spent a lot of time in Gastown, you know, worked down there for many, many years. Love the flat iron corner buildings with the brick facing. It's very Vancouverite. So appreciate the, you know, the bring back of that kind of architectural style to neighborhoods. So in summary, with those pros and cons outlined, I will be supporting.
Councilor Hardwick?
Thanks. Well, I am encouraged that we are, as a council, suggesting that we need to revisit policy. And maybe there has been some shifts in the market over the last number of years. Again, this is predicated by the Housing Vancouver Strategy Policy on which there remains a failure to produce sufficient information and data on the status of a variety of different data sets in the city currently, which is a concern, because again, this report has told council that development... Sorry, can we have mute there otherwise? Thank you. Will contribute to the city's housing objectives, which are, again, have described as being aspirational. So again, I would rather be making decisions based on evidence rather than narrative or aspiration. And until that comes about, for me, the choices are either to oppose or to abstain. But it's really hard to support things that you just do not have sufficient information on which to base a judgment. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Hardwick. I'm just going to throw myself on the queue to add a couple of comments. Certainly, I've, in the past, been critical of, for affordable market rentals that receive DCL waivers. And I think that many of those issues are being articulated tonight. And I think there are some serious policy questions. I often feel like it's a bit of a race to the bottom when we're incentivizing market rentals that are smaller and smaller, and we are foregoing important capital infrastructure revenue that we need to build our city. That being said, it is policy. And, you know, the developers are approaching this in good faith, meeting the existing policy. I do think that that conversation will be and should be forthcoming as to whether we want to continue this sort of policy and if there's other ways. All that being said, I do have to comment on the merit of this project. I'm pretty familiar with that particular intersection. And frankly, replacing a single-story 7-Eleven with a very large surface parking lot with this amount of housing, with at-grade retail, and what's been, you know, contemplated as some pretty generous amenity spaces, a good-looking design, the flat iron and the brick. I think there's a lot of merit to this project, and I do want to support that kind of design excellence. Now, of course, they are very small units, but I think that they are somewhat compensated and reflected in the size of the amenity space in some of the forward-thinking pieces. And it is consistent with the existing policy. So I will be supporting this. But I do appreciate that we're all starting to lean towards that important conversation around the policy that we put forward. So seeing nobody else on the queue, I think we can call a vote on this.
For Blanche, I'll need a vote assist in favor, please.
Great. And that passes with Mayor Stuart Absinthe, Councillor Swanson, Councilor Hardwick, and Councilor Bly in opposition. All right, folks. So we are going to take a five-minute break to allow a little bit of reshuffling of staff. And when we return in five minutes, we will be covering the last item on our agenda tonight, the CD1 rezoning for 185 to 193 Southwest Marine Drive. Five-minute break. All right, folks, and we're back. For the last item of the evening, CD1 rezoning, 185 to 193 Southwest Marine Drive. Does any member of council wish to declare a conflict of interest on item number three? Okay, hearing none. The clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by Matthew Chung Architects, Incorporated, to rezone 185-193 Southwest Marine Drive from RS-1 Residential District to CD-1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of one-six-story residential building and one-three-story townhouse for a total of 46 secured market rental residential units. A height of 17.4 meters, equivalent of 57 feet, is proposed, and a floor space ratio FSR of 2.4 is recommended. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval, subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. No correspondence has been received on this application since referral to public hearing. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 p.m. today.
Thanks, Clerk. Any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council? Please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. And there will be an opportunity for those on the phone or in person to speak at the end of the registered speakers list. We have Lex Dominiac, rezoning planner, rezoning center planning, urban design and sustainability, on the line to present the application. Lex?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council, and members of the public. My name is Lex Dominiac, rezoning planner for this application.
Got you, Lex.
The, sorry, there. The site outlined in red towards the top right of the screen is on the southwest corner of Southwest Marine Drive and Manitoba Street, and is comprised of two single-family blocks currently zoned RS1. To the north, east, and west are zoned RM8 and RS1, and developed with low-rise residential buildings. To the south, the zoning is I2 and primarily developed industrial and commercial building. 200 feet to the east, along Southwest Marine Drive, are two sites, 200 feet to the east along Southwest Marine Drive are two sites which have been rezoned CD-1 to allow for six-story social housing buildings. This rectangular-shaped lot has a frontage of 60 feet on Southwest Marine Drive and a depth of 200 feet along Manitoba Street for a total site area of just over 12,000 square feet. Two single-family homes are currently on the site, containing three secondary rental units. All tenancies are protected under the tenant relocation and protection policy. Being located on Marine Drive, a major arterial with regular bus service, the site is well-served by transit and close to the Marine Drive Canada Live Station. Amenities include a range of parks and community spaces such as Winona and Ash Parks, the Marple Oak Ridge Community Center, and several childcare facilities, as well as the J.W. Sexton Elementary and Sir Winston Churchill Secondary School. The proposal is being considered under the Marple Community Plan adopted in 2014. The site is located within the Cambi subarea of the plan, specifically subsection 6.4.6, which supports six-story residential buildings and a density of up to 2.5 FSR. The plan calls for a setback of the building's upper stories to minimize appearance of scale and reduce shadow impact. Public realm improvements are also required, including increased sidewalk width, street trees, and other public amenities. The application was submitted in January of 2021. The proposal includes one-six-story building and one-three-story townhouse, reaching a maximum height of 57 feet, and providing a combined total of 47 secured market rental units. As per the Marple Plan, residential tenure can be strata or rental for this location. With this application, at the owner's discretion, they have chosen to provide rental housing. These units will be further secured through a housing agreement prohibiting the future stratification of the unit. Thirty-five percent of the units will have two or three bedrooms. A density of 2.36 FSR is proposed. However, during the application review stage, staff have suggested the widening of certain residential units in order to improve their functionality and livability. As such, staff recommend a modest increase in FSR, 2.4. In lieu of upper-story setbacks, the building's footprint has been decreased to allow for wider yards, therefore minimizing impacts to neighboring properties. If approved, the project would contribute approximately 161 new onsite and offsite construction jobs. Here is a view of the backside of the proposal, which features a three-story townhouse building reaching a height of 26 feet. This slide compares the cost of renting versus home ownership on the west side. The applicant has indicated an interest in pursuing the DCL waiver, which is to be confirmed through the development permit process. The DCL bylaw maximum average rents are shown in the green column. In the blue column are average market rents for newer buildings. The relative affordability of renting when compared to the cost of home ownership is displayed in the red column, and the gray column provides the proposal's average unit size. A virtual open house was held from March 22nd to April 13th, and staff received 26 public submissions. Key themes of support included the massing and density, the provision of new rental housing, and the amount of parking provided. Themes of concern included the proposed development suitability with the surrounding area and potential impacts to neighborhood parking. In reviewing this application, staff have concluded that the design, height, and density meets the intent of the Marple Plan. In addition, the project will be required to conform to the parking bylaw to ensure sufficient parking while taking into consideration sustainable transportation options given its adjacency to transit. Furthermore, rezoning conditions seek to refine the design to provide a more compatible transition to neighboring properties and improve the public realm interest. The CAC policy provides exemptions for rental projects in RS-zoned community plan areas that are six stories or less. Providing 46 units of secured rental housing within a six-story development, this application is eligible for the CAC exemption. While this proposal is expected to qualify for a waiver of citywide DCL, the applicant would be required to pay utilities DCL of just over $294,000. In conclusion, the proposal is consistent with the Marple Community Plan while delivering 46 secured market rental housing units. Staff support this application, subject to conditions in appendix D. Thank you. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer any questions.
Great. Thanks, Lex. Is the applicant team here to speak to the application?
Hello, my name is Matthew Chung, and I'm the applicant for this project and architect. So, we don't have any presentation, but we will wait for any questions. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Matthew. Okay, council, do we have any questions for staff or the applicant? Seeing no questions, no questions at all from staff, or from council, sorry, to the applicant team. Council note that this is your only opportunity to ask questions of the applicant, but seeing no questions, we will now hear from the public, starting with speaker number one, Nathan Davidovich.
Oh, thank you, Chair and members of council. Actually, I have some good news for you, Mr. Chair. You and four members of council have been endorsed by the Labor Council about half an hour ago. But anyhow, this application is similar to the other ones. Some of the things that I didn't mention before is that the notification that the city does via Canada Post only goes to the people who have mailboxes. Many of the basement suites and rental suites and other ones don't have a separate mailbox, and therefore they don't get a notice of these meetings or the rezoning and so forth. And the city have to do something else. They can't rely on Canada Post. They'll have to do it, deliver the notices by hand, door-to-door, if they really want to involve the public. The other item is, there is no mention of TransLink development cost for every apartment. They get money for every apartment that's being developed in the city. And the process is, of course, that none of the people who live in those apartments or the developer or the city has any influence on what kind of bus service is provided along that corridor that they are paying money or extra money to TransLink. I mean, a special assessment, really. It's above the regular property taxes that have to be paid to TransLink. It's a special levy, and as I said, they don't have any way of influencing or any way of getting any information on what's going on at TransLink. And again, on this report, there is no proper information on the bus routes that serve the area. The number three bus that start at Marine Drive station is not mentioned at all. I think I sent to some, I mean, the cutbacks on the number three bus are horrendous and are over 30% in the last two years alone. And unless council start tying up these developments and telling TransLink, "We're not going to approve it, you're not going to get your money unless you guarantee to us a minimum level of service," and you're not going to change it every few months. So, you know, something has to be done, some kind of a contract like city council used to have with BC Hydro and BC Electric has to be done with TransLink. Well, thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, Nathan. Next speaker is speaker number two, Celine McRae-Hamdi.
Hi again.
Hi again.
It's Celine, resident of Vancouver, and got to give a shout-out to Nathan, who's persistent and committed, as you'd hope, from a resident of a city where, but I digress. I'm in favor of this development, and once again, for the same basic point, this is a private market development. It's, what is it, two or three blocks away from a Skytrain station? It's not on land that the city owns, that the province owns, the federal government owns. This is, this is two houses that are probably worth three or four million dollars. And it doesn't take a rocket scientist to tell you that four million dollars is less affordable than the DCL rental rate. And I've heard a lot of upsetting opposition to this from city councillors today, because I feel there's some confusion here. These are public housing. This isn't below-market rental. These are free-market rentals developed by private owners. This is the competitive free market at work, and if we don't like the direction that the invisible hand of the free market is taking, then we need less, or, sorry, we need more non-market housing. But instead, we have people who seem to think that if they don't like what the market's going to do, that that counts for something when they're not going to live in these places, like full stop. We, I mean, I'd love to live in a bigger place in downtown Vancouver, but I live behind two bookshelves in a living room, and I pay $10,000 in rent every year to an overseas And no shame to her, that's just the way it is. But you got to realize that the city, the rental market, the people are more dynamic and faster-moving than whatever council might ham and haw about how they feel about the way other people live when we're just trying to live in the city. If it, if I, I want to make a little bit of a topical reference that I think the council will appreciate. If the city had a policy that the building had to have 15 pieces of flair, and somebody applied with 15 pieces of flair on their building, to have the city then turn around and say, "Well, we actually wanted you to be wearing 20 pieces," then why isn't the rule, "You should wear 20 pieces of flair on your building?" That the idea that you set out design constraints and that people won't optimize a design to the extremes of those design constraints seems to misunderstand the way the free market If you want public housing, I'm all for it. Let's find the revenue and build some public housing. But I don't see anyone providing any funding, other than the private sector, and right now this place is zoned for a bigger mansion. So maybe you could make a $7 million mansion instead of a $3 million mansion. And that's what it's done for. Like, if you don't want to approve it, then default. It is what it always is. If the, if city councillors don't like city policies, would it shock you to know that you were the ones with the power to make changes to them, and that at the end of a term?
That's your time. I'm going to ask you to just wrap it up, please.
No, that's, I think that's about it.
Okay.
I don't know what, I just.
Thank you. No questions, but we appreciate you coming to join us today. Next speaker, speaker number three, Alexander Hayden Stein, and a reminder to please speak to the merits of the project and whether or not you're a resident of Vancouver, and if you're in favor or opposed to the recommendations.
Speaker number three is not on the line.
Okay. Speaker number four, Alvin Locke.
No, speaker number four is not on the line either.
Okay, that is it for speakers on our speakers list, so if there are additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound. Once again, if there are any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound. And for the third time, if there are any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound. We're going to take a five-minute break to allow anybody to call in, and we'll be back in five minutes. And we're back folks and I believe we have quorum. Perks, do we have any speakers on the line?
No further speakers on the line.
Okay, great. With no further speakers on the line, then we'll be closing the speakers list. And we'll move on to hearing closing comments, asking further questions of staff and to make a decision. Does the applicant have any closing comments?
No, we don't have any closing comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Do staff have any closing comments?
Thank you. No closing comments from staff.
Thank you. Do council have any questions for staff?
Point of privilege, if you could add me to the queue, Chair.
Sure thing. And councillor Kirby Young?
Yeah, thanks Chair. I just have one clarifying quick question. I was just trying to parse out this report for the family units. And I know it said, just looking here, that it meets the 35%. But are, how many of those are in the separate building of the townhouse units? I'm just curious if most of the family units are coming in the townhouse or it's a combination? How that splits with the six story rental building?
Thank you for the question. We have three units in the townhouse building. I believe they are two and three bedroom units.
Okay, so all of the, all the townhouses are two or three bedrooms, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And then obviously to meet the 35%, there's two and three bedroom in the six story building also? Yes?
That is correct.
Okay, thanks. It was just a quick clarification. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councillor De Genova?
I was prepared to move the recommendation.
Oh, okay. Well, I don't see anybody else on the queue.
In all fairness, I can't see the queue. Thank you.
Yep, and seconded by councillor Weeb. All right. Is there any debate? Any comments? Councillor Hardwick?
Thank you. This is actually a very suitable site for a project with these specifications. While it's six stories for the main building, they've made it a reasonable height. And when compared to many of the other six story projects that we've seen, as there's an arterial on one side, Manitoba Street and a laneway to the back and the slope going north, it's a pretty good fit. The trade off is the 10 parking spaces for 46 units. But that's probably a fair trade off since they're actually trying to minimize impacts. All that said, it adds to our long list of rezonings and I would say a precipitous amount of rezoning, which has in combination increased land inflation and therefore decreased affordability across the city. So while I think this is actually a pretty suitable project, I'm going to have to abstain because until we address the flaws in our policy and start addressing things at an evidence based basis instead of an aspirational one, we're not going to solve our larger affordability problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, I think we can just move right over to a voting queue. Councillor De Genova, do you need a voting assist?
Yes, please. Point of privilege. Vote assist in favor.
Great. And that passes with councillor Swanson in opposition. Well, folks, that's it.
Motion to adjourn.
Includes the last of our item and we have a motion to adjourn from councillor Kirby Young, seconded by councillor De Genova. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. This meeting is adjourned. And everybody?
Thanks everyone. Happy New Year.